All right, well, it's past seven o'clock, so let's get underway. This is the Sherburne zoning board of appeals Zoom meeting, it's being recorded. It's March 25th. That's a few minutes after seven. We have a, it's the continued hearing on 31 Hunting Lane and 41 North Main Street to conjoined 40B projects. Lynn Sweet was kind enough to send around an agenda with a number of items that she wants to cover. We have, we have one, two, three, four, five preliminary matters we have to cover first. But hopefully they won't take very long. First up is the issue of when our 180-day hearing period ends. Mr. Terry, I hope you have a view in it, and I'm hoping to hear that Mr. Haverdy agrees with you, but you have the floor, Mr. Terry.
Okay. So my reading of it goes like this, the hearing was October 29th. At that point, the governor's state of emergency was in place. And so under chapter 53, the Acts of 2020, deadlines for this process were told. That ended, chapter 201 of the Acts of 2020, ended the tolling as of December 1st, so by my calculation, that means that the 180 days starts running on December 1st, which would be May 30th, and that's a Sunday, so it would be May 31st. You see it the same way, or?
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna have to hate to shock you on this, but I actually agree with that.
Oh, my God. Always glad to see you agree.
I'll try not to do that too often.
Well, no, 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 don't, don't, don't stop now, you're on a roll. But maybe, Paul, if I could ask you to drop a line to the board, or to Mike, or someone, just we have a record that we've all agreed it's May 31st, and
Then obviously, then obviously, the three days after that.
Right. Okay. Next up in the batting order, and another topic on which I'm sure you are both in complete agreement, 61B and the town's rights, whatever they may be. Mr. Terry, would you like to tell us what you can tell us about where the two of you are on the town's rights?
Right, so we did serve an appraisal on the applicant landowner and Council Paul here on March 3rd. We've had exchange a few emails. They haven't, to this point, provided us with a counter appraisal, or taken any other action, but we've, we've agreed that my office is planning to meet with the select board next Thursday, and we will then owe a response to Paul. And we've agreed to extend the date by which he could provide us with a counter appraisal, if he was going to do that by April 13th, so we're in the process. And nothing, nothing hard and fast has happened as of yet.
Mr. Haverdy.
Well, I, again, I would agree with Attorney Terry. So we, we did receive the appraisal, we provided a list of concerns that we had with it. We have asked the select board to reconsider the appraisal that they submitted, and that's why we are waiting for them to have the opportunity to have another meeting to respond to the list of concerns that we provided. And, you know, either they're going to agree with us that the appraisal was not timely and not done in a proper manner, or they're going to disagree with, disagree with us, and we'll reserve our rights to take whatever actions are necessary from that point.
Right, and I, I think you'll both agree with me that the current procedural status with this board is the issue of whether or not this developer had site control under the statute was left open in our vote of October 29. We agreed to defer it because the facts might change. Mr. Haverdy has reserved all his rights to say the town either has no rights or exercises them improperly, and Mr. Terry has reserved all the town's rights to say, no, no, we got you, and, and we're gonna, we're gonna get this property. Is that a fair sort of high-level summary?
Yes, yeah, so, and just to be clear on the procedure, so if, if your board were at some point to determine and decide that that there had been a substantial change in circumstances with respect to site control, the regulations provide that you would then write a letter to the to Matt's housing advising them of that. That's the process, so if we ever get to that point, we can touch base again, and, but that's the, that's the way the records go.
Okay, great. Mr. Haverdy, you agree with all that?
That is exactly the process that's set forth in the regulations.
Okay. So speaking of 61B, here is our next topic, number three. Mr. Mills, I see you're on.
Yes.
Okay, so Mr. Mills. Yes?
It's Paul Volcicchio, 41th thing, wait, can I comment on the second item before we get to the third item?
Sure.
The, the letter from town council containing the appraisal went to the developer, and that was published on the town website. Can the response from the developer and the back and forth from council be publicly shown, so everybody can see what's going on?
It's up to the two lawyers. Some of it, Paul, will probably be seen by either or both of them as confidential or privileged. If they, they submit written materials to our board, that puts it out in the open. So, but council, I'll let you speak for yourself on the request.
Yeah, I think at this point, all the, all our communications have been confidential. I mean, we could look at that, I wasn't, I didn't consider that, or, you know, think about that question before tonight. We could, we could take a look at that.
Yeah, you could read, you know, if there's something you want to redact, you know, that's fine, I just think, you know, we're interested in, you know, the arguments on both sides, and you know, your you know, cover letter in the appraisal was public, so.
Certainly, if there's a, if there's a formal response from the applicant that gets, you know, sent to the board, then that will certainly be part of the record and be a public document. Now, we haven't got that yet, so at this point, all, all, all there is is my, my, our appraisal and my letter.
And Paul, to defend the two lawyers, the principle of confidential settlement discussions can also be, can be a little bit frustrating to people on the sidelines, but that's the point, is that they're trying to get the settlement. And so sometimes not all of us get to see all of the sausage being made.
Okay, thanks.
All right, Mr. Mills. You, representing your butter group, or not representing as a lawyer, but as sort of the designated party for your butters group, which I'll call the Hunting Lane of Butters, wrote on the 24th, and your suggestion was that our board kick out both applications on the grounds of lack of site control, is that fair characterization of your letter, or do you want to say more?
Yes, that's a fair characterization, that's the same argument that we made several months ago. What's happened between then and now, of course, is that the appraisal was not only obtained, but it's been delivered pursuant to the statute. And as a result, we feel that it's a waste of this board's time, energy, and resources to continue working on these projects when the town has this right of first refusal and is proceeding to exercise it, or at least put itself in a position where it may exercise it. So at a minimum, we think that you should, as a board, you should vote to stay your hearing pending the resolution of the 61B issues.
Okay. A fair ask, and I hear it. Board members, this gives us a chance to sort of reconsider the choices we made back in October. I will tell you that my own view is that we probably ought to stay the course. The reason for taking the position we did in October, which was to leave the issue open, was because the facts might well change. And of course, they have changed dramatically since October. But the opera, the back and forth, is not yet over. And I would say that trying to either reach a conclusion now, that they're definitely do have site control or definitely don't, is, is risky for the board. We have 180-day clock that's going to run, whether we try to stay it or not, I do not see in the regulations, Mike, tell me if I'm wrong, any right of ours to just say, sorry, that 180 days is told while we wait something else out. I think it is wise to the board to continue down the path we're going on and let the facts develop. But how did the two of you feel?
Well, I, I basically agree with that. At least through the end of May.
Well, we, all right, we'll, we'll have to make, if we get to May and are making a decision, we'll have to, in the decision, a, how to handle that issue.
Yes, Rick, I agree with what you said. We need to see the facts develop further before we can conclude issue of site control, see what the town ends up doing.
Okay. I, I don't think from a procedural standpoint, we're required to take a formal vote on this, there's been a suggestion from a citizen that we take a certain action, we're, we're declining to do it, but I, I don't see under the 40B rules, any obligation to take a formal vote, Mike, am I, am I wrong in that?
I think you're right.
Okay. All right, so before we move on to the next thing, Paul, yes, again.
Yeah, on this point, you know, I'm gonna take a wild guess, but I don't think this 61B issue is going to be decided by May 30th. It's gonna go beyond that, and, you know, if you're saying you have to make a decision by May 30th, I think there's other reasons why we're not gonna get there by May 30th. But how can you make a decision and still have this sort of hanging out there, how does that work?
It would work this way, first of all, we don't need to make a decision by May 30th, we need to close the hearing by May 30th. Our, we can still have meetings of the members for which the public can attend, discussing what we want to do, and that is the usual process, and that is likely to continue after, let's assume we go to May 31st. It's 40 days after May 31st that we have to issue a decision, and my point in waiting is, whatever decision we make on dealing with that issue, I want the most up-to-date facts.
So, so, Rick, in the event that litigation ensues, which could take years, how do you, what do you do then?
Well, I don't think we decide, I think, I think Craig, you are right, that that is a likely outcome, and litigation often takes years. But I think we, the board will decide what to do with the facts we have when we get to the end of the hearing process. But I think I, I agree with both you and Paul that it's unlikely to be final, Paul Pacheco, that it's unlikely to be finally resolved between now and May, but it could be. So that's go ahead, John.
Well, as you said, it could be resolved by the end of May, we don't know. And there's no reason to speculate really on what's gonna happen between now and then, and we'll have to deal with the record at that time.
Spoken like a trial lawyer. Thank you. Mary.
Could you just remind us, you on the ZBA or Mr. Terry, at what point in this process would the 120-day right of first refusal period begin?
So that's
Go ahead, town council.
62, chapter 61B, section nine, so it, it happens after there's a an agreement upon the consideration, so the process calls for us to give him the landowner appraisal, if he doesn't approve of that appraisal, he gives us a counter. If we don't want to come to an agreement, then we hire a third, we get a third appraisal, and at that point, that's the price. And then, then we, once they decide, okay, that's, we're moving forward, then there's 120-day period, we give them a purchase and sale agreement, et cetera, et cetera. However, you know, in this case, if there's a disagreement about that, excuse me, you can almost guarantee that we'll end up in court, and so the timeline will, in 120-day period, will go out the window, because it'll be essentially a freezing of the status quo.
Mr. Haverdy? Any dissent?
Oh, no, I, I do agree that more likely than not, this is something that's going to wind up in litigation, we're trying to avoid that, but it may be inevitable. And if and when it does, then it will be held status quo until it's resolved.
Fair enough. All right, before we move away from 61B, any further commentary or questions on 61B? Hearing none? Okay. Item number four on my list, the Sherburne Housing Historical Commission, sorry, wrote on the 6th, asking whether a PNF or an ENF needed to keep filed for this project because of the, it's in the historic district and the, the impact on the barn and the old tavern property. Town council, do you have any view on that?
I, I do not have an opinion prepared on that tonight. I think we could hear from the historical commission as to why they believe it's on the state register, if, if, if it is subject to review by, by the state process, that's not something that you can waive. It would be an additional process they would have to go through. But frankly, I didn't look at that closely enough to give you a hard opinion tonight.
Okay. Mr. Haverdy, you, you saw the letter, do you have any thoughts on whether or not you need to make any filing here?
So we are looking into whether or not a filing with Mass Historical is going to be required or not. If it is, that is the sort of thing that's done after the comprehensive permit is completed, but prior to the issuance of building permits, or demolition permits for anything. So, so that's how the process would run, I'm not 100% positive that filing is necessary, but we are looking into it, and we've contacted an expert to assist us with that.
Okay, so, Mr. Terry, if you could look into maybe for next time, what they need to file and when they have to file it, I think that's the question from the historic commission. I know that certainly, at least in one of the 40B, the the, the Mass Historic Commission was actively involved, and it made a, a big difference in the project, so like perhaps that was a different experience, but let's get some guidance from town council on what's required and when.
I'd be happy to look at that, and I'll talk to Paul, and I'm sure he'll tell me what he finds as well.
And maybe you'll agree completely once again.
You could be on a roll here.
Yeah, I know, that's getting a little uncomfortable, actually.
Okay. The fifth and final preliminary to my head was, and Lynn, we probably don't even have to spend much time on it. I think Gino sent you some information, some bids on peer review for wastewater, are you just gonna take a look at those and get back to him?
I, Gino sent me a revised budget from, from your peer reviewer, but I don't know that it was on wastewater, he, he sent us the couple of bills that had gone into the town, and we're fine with that. Gino, was there something in addition that you sent today?
No, that, that's, that's what I sent was the revised
Oh.
The revised proposal that breaks up the task into pieces and
Okay, so we, so we do take issue with it for the simple reason that we're not in front of the Concom right now, that it seems to separate out the review of utilities from the stormwater management and the site plan, when we thought that that's what, what, what we, you know, the peer review that we received the other day, it really doesn't have a provision for going through the waivers, nor does it have going through the the comp permit, so I think that Gino and I really need to work offline with it. We believe that based on the bills that have come in so far, there's still money in the 63G, 53G account, whatever it's called. And if the town wants, you know, is seeing it's depleted, we'll put more money in, but I think that, that we still a little bit confused by the budget we saw today.
Okay, and Gino, if you're willing to, as we say, speak, speak with Lynn offline and try to narrow down those issues as the board's sort of peer review representative, we would be grateful.
Absolutely.
All right, wonderful, thank you. All right, so finally, after all that, Lynn, you had a presentation you wanted to make tonight, and an agenda, you have the floor.
Good evening, for the record, Lynn Sweet, LDS Consulting Group, Wellesley, Massachusetts, and, and thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think that first up on the agenda for today, we are gonna invite Michael Malinowski from Allen &amp; Major to give an update on our discussions with FIRE, he does have a plan that he needs to share. Is, does he have the ability to do that?
I, he does.
I'm trying to see if he's on, he was on.
I am here, G.
Oh, I see you.
Do you want to share the plan, Michael, or do you want me to?
Um, I could share the plan.
Okay, and if you can just give the four or five updates that, that we, we did to hopefully satisfy the fire department.
We can do that.
Let me just see.
And by way of background, we did, we did have a meeting with the fire chief, as well as the head of the DPW shortly after our last meeting, and we've had some phone conversations with them since then, so this plan is the result of those conversations.
All right, can everyone see my screen?
Uh huh. Yes, thank you.
For the record, my, my name is Michael Malinowski, I'm with Allen &amp; Major Associates, we're the civil engineers for the project. As Lynn had indicated, we had had a meeting with Chief Ward to go over some of his concerns, specifically for the North Main Street property, and one of the items that he had indicated was the fact that the town of Sherburne uses a stormwater pond that is located out behind the current fire station on Main Street, and as part of any firefighting procedures that may happen along Main Street, their normal course of action is to actually drop a line from that pond up Main Street to fight the fire. And one of his concerns was, is if they did that, that the entrance to Powderhouse Lane would be, in essence, cut off by the positioning of that hose. So one of the things that we have looked at and provided an option for is to provide a dry hydrant connection located at the corner of Powderhouse Lane, which would be piped, installed underground along Powderhouse Lane, and would feed our projects and several hydrants that we have located along the run. So you can see that we've got a fire hydrant positioned here along the access road adjacent to our common house slash leasing area. We have situated a fire hydrant here along the first landscaped island, as well as one adjacent to the fire cisterns. This addition of a fire hydrant here was the request of the fire department, so that should apparatus come and utilize the emergency access, that they would have a very short run to fire hydrants here. This hydrant in the middle was previously shown, we have also added a fire hydrant that would be directly connected to our fire cisterns in this location. So those were the sort of main concerns that the fire chief had, and we have submitted this plan and actually reviewed it with the fire department. Chief Ward was amenable to our installation of this fire line here, which would eliminate him having to run hose down Powderhouse Lane, thus allowing access to Powderhouse Lane for residents, either leaving during an emergency, or additional emergency apparatus to enter. One of the other items that Chief Ward had asked us to look at is being able to make sure that fire apparatus could enter the property. I will reshare another. So one of the things that we had provided to Chief Ward was fire truck turning movements through the site. We not only looked at Sherburne's apparatus, or largest vehicle that Sherburne has, as well as the surrounding municipal aid groups in their largest vehicles, so should there be a need for it, that we could accommodate the largest vehicle in most of the communities in the surrounding area, so as you can see by this picture, the blue is the wheel path, and the green is the overhang, so you can see that the blue is maintained within the paved limits. One of the items was whether we could turn a vehicle, should it enter the site, and you can see that we've provided, there is sufficient room for a vehicle to turn. The addition is also along Hunting Lane, so a fire apparatus that is coming down Hunting Lane from North Main Street would be able to enter the property, so for this picture, we have shown framing cam and Ashland, which have a similar size ladder apparatus. We have Holliston as well, that we have shown that can maneuver through the site, turn around, also enter from Hunting Lane. We have Milis and Dover, Natick, and then Sherburne and Medford, showing that all vehicles can enter the property. So that is sort of where we stand with the fire department, we had also reviewed Hunting Lane, truck movements, which, and placement of fire hydrants, which Chief Ward did not take exception to, as to what was previously submitted. Can I answer any questions that the board or public may have?
G, I don't see any, do you?
Uh, no.
Okay. Please continue then.
Thank you, Michael, so, so at that, this point, we, we do believe that we've addressed the issues that were presented in, in the traffic peer review with regard to fire safety, and we believe that Jeffrey Dirk had addressed the remaining of the issues. And so we wanted to provide you with a quick overview of the single-family home proposal, and, and I can try and share my screen for that. So um geez, I thought I brought them up, hang on one sec. So these are, these are slightly, we're still, honestly, we're still kind of playing, playing around with them. And these are slightly different than what than what was submitted. But essentially, as we explained in our letter, that the market has, has changed because of COVID, that there's a need for more single-family homes, and the homes that we've designed have, have a couple of benefits, one, they're the same size, they're the same bedroom size, but the site itself is much more compact, and it's much further, it's pulled back from the neighbors, so we think that those are all positives. The other thing is that we've created a flexible floor plan. The site that I brought up right now basically has living room, kitchen, and study or dining room on the first floor, and then three bedrooms above. The second plan that we have is one, and hopefully you can see it, that has a, the ability to have a first-floor primary bedroom, and a, and then two bedrooms above, so we feel that this particular product serves a wider audience, if you will, people entering the market, people kind of leaving the market that are looking for a more compact home and less maintenance, it will still be set up in a condominium format, so that the roads and the utilities will be maintained by, by an HOA. And I know that question comes up, so I didn't, and we had provided a sample rendering of what the site, the, the, the units looked like, I don't know if you, if you want to see that. So the, the only difference between what So the, the only difference between what we submitted is that we've, we've just elongated the, the, the first floor primary bedroom. We've, we've made it a little bit longer and we ended up putting the bedroom behind the garage. And that's really what differed from what we put in a couple of weeks ago. And I think, you know, the plans are gonna, are gonna continue to evolve over time. So I don't know if there are any questions on the single family home submission.
You had a rendering, I think, of one of them in the material. So there, it's on the website. If you want to put it up, but people can also find it there.
Let me just make sure I can find it. Um.
Don't worry.
I am not.
Okay. Well, anyone who's interested, it is there in our materials that did go up in the website. And if you can't find it, I'll, I'll find it because I remember seeing.
I will, I will, I will. I'm just about to put my finger on it right here.
Okay, great. We got time.
So, um.
Mr. Garrison.
Yeah, Rick, thank you. John Garrison, 33 Hunting Lane. I just have a process question and I understand.
Can you speak up or get a little closer to your mic, please?
I just have a process question really, which is, I understand that these recent revisions are, are not really substantial revisions, but the plans that we're looking at currently for both Hunting Lane and for that matter, for 41 North Main Street are radically different from what was ever submitted to mass housing, I think in, whenever it was, fall of 2019. I, I'm not sure it's a question for this board, but at what point does a developer have to go back to mass housing? How, how much can a plan change?
Right.
Over what you submitted to mass housing before a developer has to resubmit?
Fair process question. The, the short answer, I believe, we don't have town council anymore, so I'm flying, flying on my own here, is, is it, is it a substantial change? And I think under the 40B regulations, Paul, you can predict, you can correct me if I'm wrong, they have a fair amount of leeway to make a fair number of changes in the plan. I'm forgetting the standard. We had to go through it with another one, but it seems sort of like a fundamental change. But certainly people are concerned about changes in the plans, can take a look at that regulation and these changes and decide if they want to bring before the board. Hey, wait a second, this is sub substantial, you ought to be kicking it out or sending it back or whatever.
Mr. Chairman, there is a substantial amount of leeway to change the, the fundamentals of an application during the course of the review by the board. There's a different standard once the board has actually closed its public hearing and issued a decision and when an applicant comes in to modify that decision. But even then, the changes can be somewhat significant and still be considered insubstantial. In this instance, there, there is a time for the subsidizing agency to review any changes from what it originally did a project eligibility letter on, and that is during the final approval. So the way, the way that chapter 40B works is, you know, the applicant has to get a, a project eligibility letter from a qualifying subsidizing agency. Once it gets that, it can then move forward with the local hearing process with the Board of Appeals. Once that process is complete, we still have to go back to the subsidizing agency and go through the final approval process. And that is when the subsidizing agency will make any determinations as to whether or not they believe that the changes that were made were sufficient.
Right. Okay. So what I'm, what, what I might ask you, if you're willing, is, is if you or Lynn would just write to the board and say, the standard for changes at this point in the process is X, and it's here in the regulations, and that way people are interested, like John Garrison or others can, can go look. But, but, but I think John, listening to Paul and having worked on several other areas, they do have a fair amount of leeway to change it.
That's helpful. Thank you. I mean, I certainly hear that changes are substantial, but I understand what everybody's saying.
And again, changes during the course of a hearing process can be substantial. The, the insubstantial threshold is applicable to changes that after the board has already rendered a decision. During the course of the hearing before the board, you can have very substantial changes because it's still in front of the board. The board still has the opportunity to review and, and comment on those changes and have a peer review of those changes. So as long as you're having that opportunity, there really is, there's no harm to the board. And as we noted, you know, the, the change from the original proposal to the single family houses actually increases setbacks, decreases impervious area. It's actually a net benefit.
Okay. And actually, this is my fault. I was trying to recognize Paul Patricio.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, you're both false. Thanks, Rick. And Lynn was talking about transportation in her first point. Was that intended to cover? As I remember the last hearing, there was a lot of significant open issues about egress and ingress on North Main Street. And it seemed like the peer reviewer had to go back with the developer team, development team and try to come up with a proposal. Is that going to be discussed later or has all that been worked out?
You know, we had, Gino, have we had a final response from the peer reviewer on traffic?
I haven't seen a follow-up from the last meeting.
All right. Lynn?
He might want to address that.
Yeah. So just a couple of points. The main issue with the fire department with regard to access was addressed by Michael, which is the concern was if there were a fire pipe going down Powderhouse Lane, that would essentially block access so that the addition of the, the, the hydrant and the pipe going under eliminates that concern around the access. The other issue that was raised by the DPW director was that the town is in a planning process. It's unclear to us kind of where in the process of trying to create a better intersection where, close to where our property is and has secured some complete streets funding to support some of the design of that intersection and may or may not be able to apply for some Mass Works funding. And in fact, having affordable housing is one of the requirements of, of that particular application. So at this point, the developer is certainly open-minded as to if and when the town is able to secure the funding, the design and the permits for an entryway, different than what we've been providing on Powderhouse Lane. But because it's still in the conceptual stages, we need to remain with the access that we have on Powderhouse Lane as well as the emergency access on Hunting Lane. So I'm not sure if that answers the access questions.
Well, I, I think it does. Let me play back what I thought I heard, which is there might be this interesting new intersection coming, but, but you aren't volunteering to pay for it and you're not volunteering to wait for it to show up being paid for by somebody else. And therefore, and these are my words, not yours. And, and therefore your, your default setting is that our access is Powderhouse Lane. And when the traffic peer reviewer comes back with his final word on that, people will, the engineers will be together or they'll be apart, but that'll be where it lands.
And I actually may also agree with you on this, but I will say that if and when that happens, we will pay our fair share and that's something for Jeff, our, our traffic engineer, to, to figure out what our share of, of that, that would be.
Right. And, and that in your sentence is the new intersection.
The, the new intersection, yeah. So that, that was completely new information that was brought up at the last hearing and it was said, it was, and I apologize, it was part of our discussion with, with the fire department. So it's a good question.
Gino, do we have a timeline for appearing a final peer review from our traffic person?
Not that I'm aware of, but he could perhaps respond to that himself.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Tom, you need to unmute.
That was going to say, and I think the last thing that we owe is some, some truck, truck estimates. And we, we've just gotten those in, so we need to try and clean those up and put them into layperson's terms. I think that, that might be the last deliverable.
All right. Mr. Houston, I'd missed that you were there. Please, please speak for yourself.
Well, I've been low profiling it so far, but at any rate, yes, as a result of the last meeting, I think the conclusion was that Powderhouse Lane would be blocked during periods when northbound traffic on Route 27 is heaviest, which is during the morning peak hour. And there really is not a viable solution to that. Even re-timing the signal is not going to be effective in terms of shortening the queue of vehicles to the point that you'd have free access to Powderhouse Lane. So there's not really a follow-up to that because there is not a readily available solution. I have not been part of the discussions that have occurred with the DPW director in terms of an alternative means of access to the site. We'd certainly be pleased to look at that, however.
If, if I may respond to that. So the results of our conversation and Jeffrey Dirk's point of view on this differs from Mr. Houston's. There is not a fire safety or public safety issue at Powderhouse Lane in the morning. There's an inconvenience factor, meaning that there's a delay. And as the lights change, the cars move through, but there is no public safety issue.
Okay.
If I may respond to that, that's not the measure of an unacceptable traffic impact. Generally, an intersection which experiences gridlock, such as the intersection of Powderhouse and 27 does, that is considered in terms of traffic impacts unacceptable. I would agree that you could get an emergency vehicle through there, but that's not the issue. The issue is a matter of delay and inconvenience, which is how all traffic impacts are measured. And there is no readily available solution to that, absent a new plan, which apparently is being discussed.
Okay. But Mr. Houston, if I hear you correctly, if I hear you correctly, there's also nothing that you're proposing that this developer can do other than not build.
I have some understanding that this new intersection option may involve an alternative means of access to the developed portion of 41 North Main Street. If that is true, that may present a viable alternative.
Say, say more about that.
I don't know that I can say a great deal about it because I haven't even seen the plans that are being advanced. So I'd rather reserve comment until I have a chance to evaluate the plan.
Fair enough. Okay. And let me rephrase my question, which was probably unfair before, which is assuming the new intersection plan falls flat on its face, can't get the money, can't, whatever. What can be done to avoid the unacceptable outcome here?
There, there is no real viable solution. You could sign the intersection, don't block the intersection, but that simply reserves a box in the center of the intersection. And once vehicles try to emerge from Powderhouse Lane, they become blocked. I will say that the delay is to the users of this new project, along with the businesses that use Powderhouse Lane for access. So during the morning peak hour, future residents would be inconvenienced, as would any service vehicles or customers of the businesses that are in that small shopping center adjacent to Powderhouse Lane. So that they'd be the people bearing the inconvenience and the inconvenience would be delay, it is not safety.
Okay. Fair enough. Mr. Haverty, did you want to say something on this?
Yeah. I just wanted to address the issue of, of the convenience versus safety. Safety is an issue in which a board can impose conditions or even deny a project under chapter 40B. There is no case law suggesting that an inconvenience, even if it, you know, was not an ideal situation, is the basis for conditions or denial of the application.
Right. Thank you. Okay. So board members, we're all listening to this carefully. We will at some point be faced with the problem of, as Mr. Haverty implies, there are legitimate grounds for us to condition or deny a project. There are not legitimate grounds for us to condition or deny a project. But if we approve it, it's going to be a mess down there. So that's why we all get paid what we get paid, but wait, that's nothing. So that's why we have these jobs. Mr. Patricio.
Rick, I, I didn't mention this last time because I was taking Tom's position of being low profile, but this week I'm not. But for Tom's benefit, I wanted to mention that the discussion of where the traffic backs up, it seemed, it wasn't right last week. And anybody who's come down Main Street pre-pandemic, the traffic backed up around Town Hall in the morning. So it's not, you know, backed up at Powderhouse Lane. It's backed up all the way up to Town Hall. And so it's, it's a much bigger backup than was portrayed last week. Whether it's relevant or not, I wanted to get that on, on tape.
Certainly all of us who've lived in town for 30 years or more can, can give anecdotal support to that. Okay. Maybe we can return to, well, last final question for Tom, and it's partly directed to Gino. Is it clear in Tom's letters that he said there's going to be this unacceptable condition based on inconvenience, but that the safety issue has been addressed? And if not, maybe you might ask him to supplement whatever he wrote before, just to catch up on the fire department's latest input, just so we have the, the full story.
Mr. Chairman, I, I could comment. I don't think we ever raised the issue that there was a safety problem with that intersection.
Got it. Okay. So it's all, all right. So if you characterized it correctly before, then I don't think there's a need for anything, anything new. Thank you. Okay.
A question?
Oh, sorry.
It's Michael Lesser, 54 Forest Street. I guess I wanted to, whether you're going to clarify with town council, Mr. Haverty's claim or whatever, or the limitations about to what extent any level of inconvenience is, rises to the, to a higher level, or whether you've already got that clarified.
I'm sure that when we get to a decision and discussion of conditions, there will be lots of opportunities for me to enjoy town council's company.
No matter whether you hear it earlier before they, as they try to finalize things, but okay.
Right.
Are, are we ready to move on to water and sewer?
I think we are.
Uh, Mr. Novak?
Yes, Mr. Mills. Sorry.
I just wanted to, before we get to water and sewer, you know, on behalf of all of the abutters, one of the major issues that we are concerned with is how close these homes are located to the abutters homes. And the prior, one of the prior iterations of the plans had the unit, had the buildings very close to the abutters. And Mr. Lebarsky's representatives have been maintaining that these single family homes are now much further back. I don't think that's the case. And I think that this board should look very carefully at where these homes are positioned and whether they could be positioned much further away, much further away, not just a few feet, which is what we concluded when we looked at the new plans. They appeared to be just a few feet further away, and yet they're being characterized as much farther away. So we think that this board should really spend some time looking at these plans and determining whether they, these homes could be pushed much further away from the abutters.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Malinowski, Ms. Sweet, do you have any position on that?
I'm, I'm trying, I'm trying to pull the plan up right now. I'm trying, I'm trying to pull the plan up right now, but I believe that the characterization is incorrect. I don't know if Michael has the numbers as to far back. We pulled, pulled them from, from, from the houses, but it was substantial in some instances, twice as far as, as what it, what it was. And so we can certainly provide you with the change in distances.
Right, or maybe just if it's easier for him to just run the plan with the old location superimposed on the new, it'll be very intuitive for anybody to see.
But it's, but it, but Mr. Chairman, it's not just a comparison of the two plans. It's whether these homes can be pushed much farther away than where they are now. There's quite a bit of land that, that the plan appears to permit these homes to be pushed much further away, and we, we really ask this board to look carefully at that issue.
Okay.
Yeah, and I would, I would ask that maybe this discussion be tabled until the next meeting after you see the water and sewer presentation because there are, there are constraints on the site. There are constraints on the site relative to the grading on the site. There are constraints on the site relative to the wells and other factors. So it's not just looking at a green site and saying you can move a building, you know, over there.
Right. And I don't, I don't think we need to drive this issue to earth. But Mr. Mills, I guess I would ask you and your group, you don't have to go hire engineers, but if your feeling is that the houses that are in location A ought to be in location B, just sketch it up on their plan, send it in, and then they can respond to it where with either that's a great idea or it doesn't work because of X. But let's, let's be concrete. Let's make up, if you don't like where they are.
Okay.
Right, excellent. Thank you. Good, good point, good question. All right, water and sewer, Ms. Sweet.
Yeah, and of course I finally, finally find the, find the plan on my computer here. So we are joined by Susan Honeywell and David Fertato from Onsite Engineering, who have put together a presentation to try and provide an overview to a very, very technical matter that is going to be looked at by the state in detail later on in the process. So I believe Dave is going to be running the presentation.
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Chairman, thanks for having everyone. Hopefully you guys could all hear me. Again, my name is David Formato, I'm the president of Onsite Engineering, and I'm here with Susan Honeywell from our office to kind of run through the water and sewer as Lynn mentioned. We do have a PowerPoint presentation, so should I just click on the share screen button and give it a whirl?
Go for it.
All right, can everybody see that?
Yes.
Yes.
Excellent. Still see it? We good?
Yes.
Yep. All right, thank you. So as Lynn had mentioned, we're, you know, we're here to talk about the water and wastewater aspects of the project. So from our firm, Onsite Engineering, again, I'm Dave Formato, the president, and Susan Honeywell is here. She's vice president, director of water engineering. So she's going to cover the work that's been done to date on the site relative to, you know, the public water supply aspects. And then, you know, I'll jump back in at the end to, to get into, you know, the wastewater aspects of things. You know, granted, it's, it's a large group, so, you know, the thought was be, we, we kind of run through the high level stuff and then engage on a question and answer basis. But, you know, Mr. Chair, I feel like if there's something that you in particular feel is very pertinent, that you'd like some clarification on, you know, please, please feel free to jump in and, and, you know, ask as we go.
Right. And I looked at your presentation in advance. It seemed to make sense to my feeble lawyer's mind, but if you can dumb it down enough for that, that'd be great.
Absolutely. We'll try and keep it short, sweet and to the point. So with that, I'm going to turn things over to Susan, and, you know, she can get us started talking about the water stuff and we'll go from there.
Okay, I'm actually going to skip ahead a slide, Dave. Just because I want to give everyone just an overview of, of what we're looking at. So this is the overview of the site. The wells are in the middle there. There were two wells that were installed back in August of 2019. Those were exploratory in nature. They did get permitted through the Conservation Commission, but the purpose was to verify that they, there is a viable source of water at the site. To the right is the North Main Street site where the Pine Residence is, and over to the left is the Hunting Lane site. So that just kind of gives you an overview of the project as a whole. So now if we go back to the other slide, this is kind of a zoom in of the well site. So it shows two wells 50 feet apart. We would typically put submersible well pumps in those wells and they would pump to a common pump house where they would then get pumped to the individual developments. So you can see the one going to the left, which would go over to Hunting Lane. That would be a cross-country route and it would require an easement. The one to the right goes to the North Main Street site, and that one has previously been shown on all of Allen and Major's plans as well. It is a direction, it's proposed to be directionally drilled underneath the wetlands and the railroad. The site also will require electricity to power the pumps. That's what's shown in red coming down from Hunting Lane. And there would be an emergency generator in the event of loss of power. And we would propose to put a propane generator in that general location. Again, this is just kind of a big picture schematic of what would happen at the well site. And let's see, we have a 10,000 gallon tank proposed at the Apple Hill Estates and a 20,000 gallon potable tank at the Pine Residences. In accordance with DEP guidelines, those are sized to store two days of water using Title V guidelines to kind of estimate what that water need is on a daily basis.
Excuse me, on your propane generator, is that, you know, roughly order of magnitude like the same size as the gasoline ones many of us have to keep our houses going when, when the power goes out? Or is it like one of those behemoths that sit on top of buildings for when the hospital goes dark?
Somewhere in between.
Okay. How many, how many kilowatts? Okay, all right, whatever. It's, it's not tiny, it's not gigantic. Please proceed.
Okay, so there is also pump stations that, again, Michael and Allen and Major has shown on the site plans that would provide water from the tanks to the individual buildings and residents at each individual site. One thing that will need to be cited is treatment if required based on water quality. At this time, from the water quality from 2019, which was very preliminary, it appears that there is some iron and minerals in the water that may require treatment, which is usually either using ion exchange or green sand filtration or some type of treatment of that sort. Doesn't take up a lot of space. We would assume that we would put that within this water system pump house so that the water going to the individual sites is treated. So now moving on to the slide that you guys saw before, we just want to point out that these wells and the system as a whole would be permitted through the Mast DEP New Source Approval Program. They would be classified as community public water systems, which is if you're serving more than 25 people on a daily basis is when it becomes classified in that way. So either of these sites individually would also be classified as community public water systems. And together, they're classified that way. Again, in 2019, we installed two wells. They were both 800 feet deep. One of them yielded about 25 gallons per minute, the other one, an estimated yield of seven gallons per minute. Also on this plan, it shows a zone one radius, which is the smaller circles, which is about 250 feet. And, and then the, the bigger radius is the interim wellhead protection area, which is about 624 feet. The next slide just describes what those two areas are. So again, this is a critical part of the new source approval program process is that you own or protect the zone one radius around each well. So as it states here, it requires the public water system to own or control the zone one of their wells and to limit those activities directly related to the provision of water supply or to activities that will have no adverse impact on the drinking water quality. So really, if you want a way to protect a land area, there's no better way than to have a well there that's regulated by the state. They don't want to have, we typically do not pave in those areas. And as shown on the plan, it really would just be a pump station and the water mains within that zone one area. The interim wellhead protection area is more of a theoretical area that contributes recharge for groundwater source and it's proportional to the approved pumping rate. That's that larger 624 feet that was shown. And really, when we're doing the first phase of the new source approval process, DEP will just review that area to make sure there's no significant sources of contamination within that that protective radius. And the wastewater that Dave will talk about later has to be cited outside of that area. Next slide, I just wanted to kind of go through, if the board isn't familiar with the new source approval process. I don't know how many public water systems have been permitted and sure of one, but it's a very comprehensive, multi-step process that starts from citing the source, conducting the pumping test, and then writing a complete pumping test report in a very comprehensive design prior to getting approval to construct the source. That design includes all components of that public water system. It would include the wells, the pump station, the water mains, the water tanks, all as part of that process. It's important to note that this is less than 70 gallons per minute and DEP makes a differentiation at 70 gallons per minute. If it's greater than that, then there's a Water Management Act permit and a much more stringent approval process that goes with that, that requires MEPA permitting and everything else. But if you're less than 70 gallons per minute, which is, which is where we are, it's still a comprehensive process, but doesn't have quite the quite the review as the Water Management Act permit. Because it's a public water supply, there's no local permitting through the Board of Health. And as I stated before, the Conservation Commission, we had already received approval when we put those wells in. We had also installed some monitoring well dry points in the wetlands that we monitored over the course of the pumping. And we conducted short duration pump test, which was about four hours long, just to get an idea of what that yield and water quality would be. So moving forward, we would have to file an amendment, amended filing in conjunction with the comprehensive permit for that other work at the site. So that's kind of an overview of the water system. I don't know if anyone has kind of general questions that I can answer before I hand it over to Dave.
Can I ask a follow up on the local Board of Health and Conscom roles? If I, if I've read the waiver request, Lynn, correctly, and these materials from Onsite correctly, and let's put aside for right now the wastewater. The only Board of Health or Conscom role going forward would just be with respect to this last bullet point that she shows, the piping from the wells.
There, there is no local Board of Health review process of this. It's done at DEP and it's done after, after comp permit before building permit. There will be, as part of our application to you, because our plans include the piping going under the wetlands, that, that is part of our application to you and it is part of the review by the Conservation Commission.
And Matt Vitale and Steve Harris both had their electronic hands raised, so they're next up. Matt, I'm picking you first just because I saw yours first.
Sounds good. So Matt Vitale, 1 Mill Street. I think one thing I would just raise to Mr. Novak and the rest of the ZBA is, you know, one of the things we've definitely seen has been water supply issues in that area. I'd definitely say, while I don't disagree with the assessment of the role of the Board of Health, my recollection is that there was some part of the 54 North Main project that included some evaluation of the impact on about as well, which feels like it would be, if my recall is correct, even more important in this instance, given the large volume of water from an area where we've seen a number of homes need to redraw wells in the last several years.
Did you mean 41 North Main?
No, the one that's
I think it's 59.
Yeah, oh, 59, got it. Yeah, all right.
My, my recollection from that was that there was some pattern of assessment to look at that about as well. And I remember some detailed discussion of the specific technology that was looking at the water levels, if I'm recalling that correctly.
I think you are. In the 59 North Main Street case, Ron, tell me if I get it wrong. Their wells were going to be right next to the abutters wells.
No, that's correct.
Yeah.
I would just like to add to that. It was on this slide that's still on your screen here. But as part of the DEP approval process, we have to submit a proposal of what the pumping test is going to look like. And that always includes monitoring of at least the direct abutters drinking water wells. That's in our experience, that's what DEP will require. And so that when the pumping test report is written, we have to look at all of that data, including the drawdown in the abutters wells and if there was any from the pumping test.
And to my comment would just be to you guys to say, I would encourage you to take inclusive a definition of that to look at broadly as that impact. I worry that with this larger volume coming out of that pre-concentrated area, there certainly could be impact. And so just want to flag that for the ZBA in their consideration.
Thank you. Mr. Harris, you're next.
Good evening. Hi, Susan. Stephen Harris, we live at 24 Hunting Lane. If you can go to the previous slide, I think we're within your circle of, and I was just wondering, this is our barn right across the street in our house, and it's unclear to me what this circle indicates again. Could you repeat?
Sure, that's the interim wellhead protection area, and it's kind of a theoretical idea of the water that contributes to the well. Again, the only regulation is that we cite any large groundwater discharges outside of that radius. If there was underground storage tanks or things of that nature in a commercial area, that would also raise a red flag for DEP. But in a residential area like this, regular residential use is not considered a potential water quality issue to the well.
So are there any, I'm sorry, so are there any impacts on Mr. Harris's use of his property from being in this circle?
No.
Okay.
Rick?
Yeah, hold on. Steve Harris, are you, or is that, do you feel your question was answered?
Yes, I mean, it's, it's hard to believe that that volume of water would not impact our water supply. That was a pretty confident no, and I think that's questionable.
Well, the question I asked her was, was regulatory. As in, were there regulatory impacts on you? I wasn't asking her whether it would make your well go dry, so. As in, were there regulatory impacts on you? I wasn't asking her whether it would make your well go dry. So.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I might.
Issue. No, no, hold on. We're taking people in the, in the order in which they came. And Mike the Lesser is next.
Oh. Dave is the consultant from Onsite.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Dave. Because the screen's up, I can't see everybody.
And I know. I just wanted to point out a little bit of a clarification that the anticipated well pumping rate from these wells is going to be, as you, as, as noted, you know, around seven gallons a minute, which is essentially what most people are probably pumping their wells at. So while the volume of water is, is greater, it's important to note that these wells aren't going to be pumped at 20, 30 gallons a minute. Because as a public water supply, they're providing two days of storage. So the wells are filling the storage tanks. The storage tanks are providing the water. So these wells are not going to be pumped at these really high rates. They're probably going to be pumped at the same rates as most of the abutters wells. You know, I have a well in my house and, you know, our pump puts out five gallons a minute. And it's like about the bare minimum. So, you know, seven gallons a minute, you're not talking about a lot of water. And then I would also, you know, argue that because you have storage and it's being, it's a public water supply that's actually operated by an operator, there is some ability to control how those wells are controlled relative to filling those tanks, i.e. that you can use the tanks for a large portion of the volume and then, you know, target refilling overnight so that, you know, these wells are being operated at a time when most people aren't using their wells. So it's, it's, it's a balancing act. That's one of the advantages of having a public water supply permanent through the state is that you have that level of oversight and control on the operational side that is greater than you would if it was just a community source or an individual well that isn't monitored at all. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. And, you know, to, to, to the non-engineer, it sounds like, well, a great deal of water is still drawn, it's drawn in more regulated and level periods as opposed to one big sucking sound, as they used to say in politics. All right, Mr. Lesser, you're up next.
Michael Lesser, 54 Forest Street. I was going to make a different set of comments, but it just, before I get to that, I was going to just react to the last thing that was said, that whilst the rate is maybe not that much of an issue, you're still talking about how many units consuming a bunch of water and that it's still a significant quantity, maybe over time, whether it's you worried about a drought year or you worried about just over five or 10 years of the sustainability of the water supply. So I actually find the comments that you, Dave, were just making to be somewhat a little pointed, disingenuous in terms of the issue of sustainability of quantity of water. Because we still don't, because these people in the surrounding areas and other parts of town have found issues of quantity of water constraints over time. So I don't, I don't find that answer particularly satisfactory, but I'll move on to what I was going to say about for the ZBA's conditioning. Whereas in the slide after this, you talk, they talk about how DEP will specify a pump testing regime and whatever else that, that the length of testing and number of sites that are then monitored. The DEP could probably be, and others could maybe speak better this, but from the last time we talked about this, those can be, DEP can be fairly conservative in what it requires and whether in a town like ours in an area where we've been experiencing some shortage of water supply, whether this EBA should be getting some consulting help or some other help about the fact that whether for local issues, we should be conditioning what that water testing should be so that at least that the DEP might not be sufficient and that you have as a town with water supply concerns, we should be able to develop a test that's maybe even, even though it's wasteful, a more extensive testing time as well as making sure that it's not just monitoring a butter's well, that it's a much more extensive, which is what issues came up before, a much more extensive set of sites that will be monitored during the testing itself. And so those other kind of testing protocols, leaving it to just DEP, I think will be not serving the town well, given our local resource issues and constraints. And that I think the ZBA should get some further assistance to actually condition the project more specifically because of our local concerns.
And Gino, as we're, Gino, as we're having a peer reviewer take a look at this, that Michael's question is a fair question to that peer reviewer, which is what, given this town situation, is, is the right level of testing that, that makes sense from the developer standpoint, but is also fair to the town? Because I, one thing we can't do is simply say to this developer, we're sorry, but all the well capacity was used up by the butters. You're too late. It's like when you say to the developer, sorry, the schools are full, you can't build. That's not, that's not the way we're allowed to do permitting. So, but, but your, but your point about monitoring and, and making sure that we are wise here is a good one.
Okay. I'll, I'll make another point as to, I'll speak just as a conservation commissioner that it's probably a broader set of issues than just the piping that goes through there. I mean, that's also interrelated with the level of testing that's done. Because the concern came up that that level of water draw right next to the wetland will affect the wetlands itself. And so it's even the Conservation Commission issues can, will be broader than, can be related to that supply, quantity of water issue as well as, and there's other concerns going on besides just the piping that was mentioned before in terms of the, there. So I won't go into what they are, but there'll be more than just that.
Okay, but because our board, it's, it's a good question, Michael, but because the ZBA is being asked to rule on and essentially waive a lot of Conscom jurisdiction here. If Conscom or individual members want to weigh in and say, we think you should do X, you know, write that down and send it in. We may not necessarily do what you want, but, but now's the time to speak up.
Okay, I guess we'll talk about it at our next meeting.
Ms. Beardsley, you're next up.
But you have to take your
Okay, Darrell Beardsley, Forest Street. I would like to know, could Onsite remind me as to what the pumping test regime was the last time? What was the duration of the pump test?
It was a short duration, so it was four to eight hours. I believe it was four hours. And a step test. So it was started at one rate and the hydrogeologist that was conducting the test would step up if he felt like it could sustain more withdrawal or step down. So that's why there's such a big difference in the two well estimated yields, if you'll see the slide before, I believe, this one. One was 25 gallons per minute, the other was seven gallons per minute, and that was based on that four to eight hour pump test.
And were the wells being pumped simultaneously during that test?
They were not.
Okay, so that we feel is very important, given how close they are to one another, that they are likely, you're pumping from one, they're pumping the same water and whether it's from one or the other is an issue. And so certainly would like that looked at. And, and even though, you know, the point earlier about well, you're too late, we don't have enough water versus the schools are full, we can build schools, but we can't make more water in town. So it is a very real environmental, physical limitation. So certainly extended pump testing to really get a better handle on the dynamics of the yield and go along with the good monitoring of the surrounding area and absolutely simultaneous pumping from those two wells, otherwise it's meaningless. And I also agree with the earlier comments that to talk about a seven gallon per minute pump rate for something at a home that is so intermittent compared to something that's going to be pumping many more hours of the day to fill those storage tanks that then lead the water into the, the dwelling units is entirely different. So I, I just want, if that's not for your elimination, as anyone who was listening, hearing that comparison of the same potential gallon per minute pump rate.
So again, I'd just like to, we understand those concerns and that would all be outlined in our pump test proposal to DEP. And I would just encourage whatever feedback you can provide to the Northeast region when we file that. In our experience, they have been very aware of local issues. This is why it's classified as a public water system so that DEP does look at these greater issues in the community. So in my experience, we typically pump both wells at for 48 hours continuously. And then oftentimes we'll pump them then simultaneously for another 48 hours. Other times we'll do a five day extended duration pump test with both wells pumping. So that will be worked out with DEP during that new source approval process. And, and like I said, it usually includes monitoring of the abutters wells that are willing and interested in having their wells monitored.
Excuse me, when, when does that process begin? Ms. Honeywell? When, when do you make the filing with DEP?
We
Let me have been to respond to that. That is something that's done post-permit. That, that's the sort of additional permitting that occurs after a comprehensive permit has been issued. Because again, the way chapter 40B works, an applicant is not required to expend the resources to do all of this additional permitting without knowing whether or not they're going to get a local approval of the comprehensive.
Thank you.
And I also want to point out, the board is limited in its jurisdiction when it's serving as a comprehensive permit granting authority, to the jurisdiction of other local boards. So to the extent that we need waivers of local rules and requirements, the board is certainly within its rights to impose conditions with regard to permits, testing and things of that nature. But it does not have any jurisdiction to assert itself into state permitting processes such as the public, you know, public by process or the groundwater discharge permit process. So I do just want to make sure that we're keeping within our lanes, if you will. The state has processes that it, it requires for these particular applications and the board doesn't have any authority to oppose conditions that go above and beyond what the state.
Well, but, but that's, that's true and that's not true because it's certainly true that we can't interfere with or condition a state process. But to the extent that you are asking us to waive a local process, a condition related to that local process is within our jurisdiction.
Correct, but there is no local process with regards to public water supplies or with regards to groundwater discharge permits.
Well, but, but you've just put the rabbit in the hat. There's only no local process because you presume you get all your waivers from us.
Well, again, so, so you can't subject a comprehensive permit applicant to unequal treatment. You can't impose requirements that go outside of whatever your local rules and requirements are. And that's
We, we agree on that. I think we, we disagree is where that boundary falls. We need not resolve it tonight.
That's fine.
Mr. Garrison, I think you had your hand up next.
Yes, thank you. Similar to Steve Harris's comment, I'm another one who falls within the interim wellhead protection area. I'm certainly concerned about my well, but, but coming at it from the other direction. I noted that it was, you know, puts limitations on land uses and activities. Am I under any additional restrictions on my property by virtue of falling in within this wellhead protection area? Hypothetically, if I wanted to undertake construction on my house, my septic field is also in this circle, expand my septic and expand my house, would I be prevented from doing that hypothetically?
Want the town to be able to provide mass DEP.
No, generally, you know, single family septic systems are in a lot of use within an IWPA.
And, and that's talking about at the state level. I do know that the Town of Sherborne has a regulation through the Board of Health, the Water Supply District Protect, Water Supply Protection District. I would have to look closer at that local regulation.
Yeah, no, understood. I understand that I'm currently under whatever restrictions the town imposes on me. I just wondered if there would be additional ones by virtue of this new development.
For the Onsite people, one, one bit of local lore that you may not be familiar, familiar with, we, we had a situation in the past where there were arguments about people putting in a spite well, a well at a particular location designed to regulate their neighbor's property. So that's one of the reasons why locals are sensitive to that issue.
And, and Rick, if, if I could just ask another question, it's jumping ahead a little bit, but it's, it's responding to, to Attorney Haverdy. He said there is no local jurisdiction for stormwater management. Our peer review study, I thought noted that, that there is no waiver possible from our town stormwater management bylaws. And that, that this, this project, even though a 40B would still be subject to our town stormwater management bylaws. Is that, does anybody know the answer to that question?
That, that sounds wrong to me. I mean, we can look, look at where it comes from because the whole point of 40B is to override a local bylaw. It may be that what the stormwater people were saying was there was some state regulation. But, but if, if there is some town local bylaw on stormwater, 40B blows it up. Unfortunately, that's the way the statute is designed to work. I don't like the statute, but that's the way it works.
Although I would clarify, Mr. Chairman, I was not saying that there would be a stormwater bylaw.
Okay.
I was referring to wastewater treatment facility requirements and public water supplies.
Right.
Having to do with local stormwater bylaws.
Okay, Michael Lesser, very quickly, and then Craig Mills.
I want to come back to, I guess, to comment about what processes happened before and after on this, on the waters, on the water supply quantity testing. I guess, since I'm supposed to address things to you, to the chair, whether to ask whether the applicant is, whether if they're going to put off saying that they have to, that they don't have to file with the DEP on what the protocol would be for the testing until after the comprehensive permit, whether they're willing to at least if we're going to do a peer review of what it is we need, whether they're willing to participate even in in discussions before you come up with conditions about what the degree of testing will be and how far it'll go. Like, like they keep saying, oh, to a butters, to a butters. I would, some of the issues that came up before is that that some of the monitoring would go beyond just the simple abutters. And there might be more extensive testing in this case, and where there are local requirements, as you hinted at, could, could drive a condition beforehand. I can't tell whether Mr. Haverdy was saying that, that you couldn't even have that or not, but whether they would participate in a process of trying to sketch out what that filing would be with to the DEP and, and get some sort of possible concurrence beforehand, before you do your, close the permit. They don't have to file with the EP, but to understand what it is will be requested then as part of with the peer review help and other comment, whether we could find, whether we could adjust that to our process within this comprehensive permit process. And it's not just left to be a black box that they decide to do later.
Yeah, let me try to respond to that, Michael, because it, it's a fair question. With very few exceptions, and there's one Superior Court judge who seems to feel that certain wetlands filings can't be done. It's elective. And the, the dance, the risk reward for developers and, and Mr. Haverdy's position is, if you make these applications while it's still before the board, the ZBA, the ZBA and the locals may, may get involved in the process and maybe you won't be able to control the process the way you want to. But the disadvantage is if you wait till after the ZBA process is done, the ZBA has to shoot blind in a lot of these things. And maybe you're going to wind up with some conditions, enforceable conditions, that you would have avoided if they'd been in the process. So that, he can speak for himself, but having done a lot of development work, I think that's what's kind of in the back of his mind is trying to manage that, that risk reward.
And that is certainly part of it, Mr. Chairman. Again, I, I don't think that there are any local rules and requirements that are applicable to public water supplies or to groundwater discharge systems. If there are, certainly I'm happy to look at that and have a discussion as to whether or not there's any peer review process that would be appropriate, but I, I don't believe that there are any because the state has essentially occupied the field when it comes to public water supplies and when it comes to groundwater discharge. They don't really leave any room for local rules and requirements. They, they are a hundred percent their way or the highway.
So would it be your position then, Mr. Haverdy, that the town can't have even the materials that we've been given peer reviewed?
No, I, I certainly think you have the right to peer, to peer review any materials that have been provided. And I certainly think that, so I understand the difficulty in that, in that the board is being placed in a situation where it is required to issue a decision on plans, you know, that, that may be more limited than, than what they want to see. But unfortunately, that's the way chapter forty B works.
Well, doesn't have to, you, you, you could have made this application months ago. You could make it while, in, while you're in our hearing. You are choosing, as is absolutely your right, not to do so and I respect.
Well, and again, that, that, that's also a cost issue.
Yep, yep, absolutely.
You know, we need to, to manage the, the costs of the development and it, it's simply a matter of making sure you've got your local permits before you go for your state permits. And, and I am familiar, by the way, with that Superior Court decision that you just referenced. I don't necessarily agree with it, but it is what it is.
Still waiting to find a good lawyer who does, but.
So does that mean that we have no basis to ask? Does that mean we have no basis to ask for as due to our local conditions anymore to define a better monitoring or initial testing? We might have a continued condition or even conditions about monitoring going in the future, but do we have terms of defining the what's tested and what's monitored? That do we have any position, any, any angle to play in terms of doing that?
Playing, playing an ankle doesn't sound like the, the process the ZBA is trying to run here. But I, I, I believe we will find through the process of peer review, some guidance on what things are rational for us to ask for in circumstances and what are not. That's one of the questions I'm going to have.
And Mr. Chairman, we would certainly welcome suggestions from your peer review consultant as to what testing protocols it believes are appropriate and, and if they're consistent with, you know, the state requirements, I, I think you'll find that we're agreeable to them.
Yeah.
We, we, we can't be, you know, placed in a position of having to live up to testing requirements that are inconsistent with what the state.
Right. And, and Michael, I, I think I'm, I'm agreeing with Mr. Haverdy that there are, his point is that there are real limits on where our board can go here. We might disagree on the exact boundaries of those limits, but, but they're there. They, they are definitely not nothing is what I would say to you. And I think Craig Mills is next. Sorry, you've been waiting patiently.
That's okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's a fact that a number of the abutters already have dry well issues to one degree or another. If after all this rigorous testing is done and certainly as has already been pointed out, the testing that's been done is not adequate. But if after all this, the rigorous testing is done and the project is built and a number of the abutters wells go dry, what is our recourse? And I'm asking that of the lawyers present as well as for the ZBA to think about. What if, what if our wells are, become contaminated? What if they go dry? That, that, that is effectively a taking of our properties. And obviously entirely inappropriate. So how do we protect ourselves?
Mr. Haverdy.
Well, I mean, I'm not going to provide legal advice to the abutters other than to say that there is a process with the DEP that's certainly an appropriate question that could be raised during that process. I'm sure they get it frequently from concerned neighbors when they are reviewing public water supplies.
Well, I think it is important for this board to understand that we, we are hiring a water expert in order to review all of what's been proposed and to advise us. I'd like to yield the floor to Paul Boikio, who I think wants to make a further comment about that.
Okay, but, but, but before we go there, to the extent that you hire an expert and that expert has opinions, materials, what should be done, what shouldn't be done, and you're willing to share it with us, we're, we're glad to receive those materials.
Thank you. Yeah, we certainly will do that, of course.
All right. Please, I think John Garrison was next. And, and that, and then maybe Paul, but, but was that?
I'll yield to Paul.
What was that?
I'll, I'll, I'll yield to Paul.
Okay, but, but, but you don't get to choose.
All right, okay. Well, I, I will, I will follow on then and, and, and since I sort of dragged us into the stormwater, but clearly the, the two issues are related, the water supply and the stormwater. Reading from the peer review, it says the proposed project is subject to the Sherburne Wetlands Administrative Bylaws Regulations, which incorporate the Sherburne Stormwater Management Bylaw by reference. So I'm, again, I'm not a lawyer, but just a clarification. That seems to me to, to read that this project is subject to our local stormwater regulations.
No, sir, no, sir, because they asked for a waiver of that. And if the peer reviewer applying behind otherwise, I believe he's incorrect as a matter of law.
Okay, thank you.
I'm, I'm sorry. And, and Paul can say it for me, but.
You, you make me be the bad guy?
All right, I'll, I'll be the bad guy. Unfortunately, that, that one's, so I, I think there's a misunderstanding there. He may not have understood that a waiver was requested for the local bylaw.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Yes.
This is Tom Houston.
Yes.
Yes, I just wanted to say when we did our peer review, we made it clear that we looked at stormwater regulations at the state level which are mandatory and cannot be waived. We also looked at regulations at the local level because while the board has the authority to waive local regulations, the board has not come to that decision. And I think it is appropriate to inform the board the extent to which the project does or does not comply with local regulations which may fit into the board's decision process as to whether those regulations can be waived without significant damage to the environment. So we went through the local regulations recognizing that waivers have been requested, but not granted.
Perfect. Okay, that, that, thank you for that clarification because that is exactly the way the process is supposed to work. Thank you. Okay, I know Paul was next, I believe.
Yep, yeah, that's Paul Boikio. Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Two things, Rick. One, sort of following up with, with Daryl mentioned earlier, I think it, it should be within the purview of the ZBA to consider the fact that because of the environmental concerns, stormwater, well, septic and with Sherburne being one of a handful of towns out of, I think, three hundred fifty-one towns in Massachusetts that rely, you know, primarily almost solely on wells and septic systems that it should be within the jurisdiction or the purview of the ZBA to take that into consideration and possibly come to a conclusion that a huge development like this on this type of property cannot happen. So it's not, you know, as Daryl said, you can build more schools, but if the geology or topography of this area doesn't support eighty-eight residences, it just can't happen. And, you know, I, I just think that's something that should be, you know, thought about by the ZBA.
I certainly agree and, and we will think about it. We encourage everybody to bring it to our attention. I, I do need to remind everybody the situation we're in here, which is anything for which we turn down this project has to quote outweigh close quote, the compelling need for regional need for local housing. And that, whether or not we've struck that balance correctly will be made by the Housing Appeals Committee. And there's a very heavy thumb on the scale in favor of the local housing. So that, that's why I'm saying, you know, if you've got something good, bring in something good and compelling.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, you know, obviously we're aware of that and we're not against affordable housing. It's, you know, there's certain areas that it's, you know, not even more conducive is, is not really the right term where it's, you know, compatible. If this was Brookline, Newton, Framingham, any other town where you just plugged them into the water and septic, you know, these issues wouldn't be there, but Sherburne is unique.
Right.
But so.
But we still, we're still stuck with the same statute.
Right. So the second point that what Craig mentioned is that we are hiring a water engineer who's, who's been on the call and is going to sort of look at the plans, hasn't had a chance to look at the plans. And I, I think he just wants to make just a couple of comments about what he'll be doing and obviously we'll share whatever he comes up with, you know, with the board. So.
Okay. If he can raise his hand, Paul, Paul, if he can raise his hand, I can try to process him in a line here.
Sure.
That'd be great. Okay. Marian, Marian is next.
I'm, I'm changing the subject slightly to the stormwater issue. Gino is here. He could probably chime in much better than I can here. But regarding the stormwater, you do have as zoning board of appeals, the decision to, you can make the decision not to grant a waiver. That's in your hands. I understand that you are reluctant to do that if you don't think it will be upheld. But in the case of stormwater, the state, it happens anyway, but the state's stormwater standards are essentially the same as our Sherburne stormwater laws. So deferring to the state is not such a bad thing in terms of stormwater. In terms of water supply, it's another issue.
Okay, thank you. Michael, very quickly, please.
Yes, I'll, a little something new. Michael Lessin, Steve O'Forest. We're all worried about the water use. I don't know whether it's part of their, I haven't been able to read their proposal, whether they be willing to submit that they would also try to do more extensive water efficiency and conservation measures and whether that's something that you're willing to condition. And they can include where they go beyond the normal building standards or, or codes in terms of water usage on appliances and this, that, and the other, that they do whatever they can to alleviate the burden on the water supply and whether they, the applicant is willing to put that as part of their, their plan to help address some of our concerns. And that you can condition them.
Lynn?
Yeah, I, I'm sorry about that. I'm, I'm just, I'm getting a little confused about the discussion of the peer reviewers and, and who's doing what. It sounds to me like the neighbors have hired a peer reviewer to look at this issue that may be on the call tonight. But the town keeps saying, people keep saying that the town needs to hire a peer reviewer. And in looking at the revised scope of services and the, the background of the civil engineer, are, is there a suggestion that there is going to be a proposal coming in on behalf of the ZBA for someone else that is going to be specifically looking at these water and sewer issues or is the assumption that that's included what's in front of us?
Yes, no, no. First of all, whoever the neighbors have hired, he's not a peer reviewer. I mean, in my, in my view, he, he might be the smartest person in the world. He might be the world's best water person. But the peer reviewer is somebody working for the ZBA.
And, and has that party been identified?
Gino, I don't think so yet, right? We just, we just saw the water stuff for the first time. So I don't think we've, have we hired anybody for this?
We have not. We have discussed, you know, someone who had been used on a previous project, but there's been no contract or discussions with them so far.
All right. So one thing I'd asked you and Lynn to do is you're having your offline conversations about who, who's reviewing what is, let's try to get somebody lined up because the, we are going to need this peer review. And that person should be working with the ZBA.
Thank you. And the other comment is that on the, I, I think Susan can clarify this a little bit more that there is, when it does get to the DEP process, there, it sounds like there is input that is allowed by, by anyone at that point in time. So I, I, I know there's been discussion about the fact that the, the, the town can't, you know, rule on this as part of the comprehensive permit, but there, the town and the abutters are, are not excluded from the process when and if it happens. So thank you.
Right. Can I just have people pause for a moment here? I thought I, there it goes. Yes. Okay. So Dr. Dr. Wang, sounds like you want to speak. Minor technical problem, but if, but if you're, you're here and can speak up, please do so.
Yes, good evening. Can everyone hear me?
Yes. And, and are you representing the abutters, sir?
Yes, I was just recently contacted and I have not really spent lots of time to go through the documents, but I have sitting through the presentations of the project team of the applicant. And I do feel, I have worked in Sherburne also on forty B projects before. And I do feel that Sherburne is quite a unique town and they are supplied both serviced by both well water as well as septic systems throughout the town. So from that perspective, you rarely find a town nearby in in this kind of setting. So I do, I, I'm hired and as I told the neighbors, I will do my best technically to review all the designs and study to make sure the impact to their property is properly addressed. I, I think that's what my goal and I'm, it's not my goal to stop any projects because I have been on the other side of it, but I do want to make sure my, my, my mission or what I'm hired is to make sure, do my best to understanding. So here I can see that the, the well as the chairman and the chair of Border House raised, it's very valid issues from the testing and from the production or the year of the wells is properly tested, not just a short time. As I know, there's wells, especially bedrock wells. If you're testing in a high water time and it seems like you have enough water, but in the long term, in the summer, they may dry out because with aquifer was supplying the wells is important. So not just at the water level because the total production. So I haven't really getting into it according to the, the design engineer seems like the pump, if the tank is two days of supply means is about fifteen thousand gallon actual daily use gone into the title five, so it means almost ten gallons per minute continuously throughout the day to, to pump it. So that volume is quite different. So I, I would like to see the project. the project, the applicant will, will, in, in their hydrogeologic study will do a little bit more in depth to address that concern. And the monitoring is another thing as the neighbors raised the concern is how do we monitor actively using wells? So because their well is pumping up and down, how do we know the monitoring is effective? And address the concern of impact because if their well is using whole, what is the technology, the monitoring they are going to use? So I would like to see, it doesn't mean it cannot be, but I have to be convinced and it can be repeated to, to be checked, know that the monitoring of the impact on the neighbors is, is properly monitored and addressed in a long-term perspective. And again, so I know the DEP have their guidelines and I do feel the local board should have the, the right to asking for a proper protocol or modify for the town given the town's environmental settings, they are supplied by wells and, and septic for the entire town. And especially this project is located quite in the central of the town and already have a very densely developed use around it. So it's a competing resource, how, how that competition is properly addressed as well as mitigated so through the design. So yeah, without getting into much of the detail of the design, so that's what I would focus on and the stormwater. They may be exempted under the local bylaw, but the state Wetlands Protection Act and which include the stormwater management part should be applied here. And so it need to be properly addressed and designed. So.
All right. We, we look forward to your input. Thank you very much. Mr. Malinowski, I think you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Michael Malinowski with Allen and Major Associates. I just wanted to sort of briefly go over the, the stormwater. We had just recently received peer review comments from Mr. Houston's company. On Sunday, we have not had a chance to fully respond to the stormwater comments, but based on my cursory review, I don't see anything that's outstanding that would substantially change the design or the intent of the project. We do fully acknowledge that state standards are in play here and we tend to comply with them as we can. I know that the town does have local stormwater bylaws, but I did not see anything in those bylaws that was contradictory to what the state has relative to treatment and water quality. We will definitely need to go through Mr. Houston's comments more carefully and provide a detailed response and update the plans as needed.
Thank you. That's very helpful. It would be terrific if your response can call out either that you do comply with the local stormwater regulations in each respect or in the respects that you don't. You know, why not? Because that's essentially what our board will be asked to rule on.
Yes, and that's, and that's, we have part of that included in our stormwater management plan that was submitted. The state does have their sort of ten standards that we need to comply with, but we can sort of elaborate on that to sort of cross resprints the, the local regulations as well.
That would be helpful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Lesser, one more time quickly. Michael, are you still, did I forget to lower your hand before? Are you still waiting to speak?
I wasn't waiting to speak, although I would still like to know if there's a process by which they might be water efficient or conserving in their designs. But I didn't have anything more to add other than waiting to see if they would answer that even as, and they would voluntarily do that kind of thing.
Lynn?
Would it be okay if we, it's getting late, can we do the second half of the presentation?
Okay, we, we, we'll defer that as an open question. I assure you that Mike will raise it again. Okay, let's get, let's, good idea Lynn, let's move, absent compelling objections. I'd, I'd like to suggest that we do move along to the, to the wastewater. So Lynn, you're up.
I'll drop right back in.
Dave's going to jump in. Sorry about that.
All right. So to continue, as, as everyone is aware, this site is going to be subject to a mass DP issued groundwater discharge permit. So I, I thought I'd take a minute just to kind of maybe talk about that a little bit for, for those members of the board and public who may not be as familiar with this as, as they may be with Title V. So the groundwater discharge permit program was started by the DEP back in the nineteen eighties. To date, there have been about approximately a thousand permits issued in Massachusetts. And they are most often issued to developments such as this, whether it be private residential condominiums or rental units, you know, or, or some combination thereof, such as, you know, the Apple Hill Pine Residences site. These facilities are regulated under three fourteen CMR five. It actually has nothing to do with Title V, even though sometimes you hear about, you know, I was talking about Title V flow. That's just a kind of a relic of, of language. It's, it's a completely separate set of regulations in Massachusetts. The process is, is highly regulated through mass DP's engineers during site assessment permitting, construction and operation. And the permitting process is going to be in two steps. The first step is the hydrogeological permitting, which is a BRP WP eighty-three, which essentially approves a site for a specific quantity of, of wastewater effluent into a tested and approved leachive field location. Once that area has been tested and approved by the state, you are then allowed to actually proceed with the second step, which is permitting an actual treatment system, the collection system. And at that point you would get an actual discharge permit. So the hydrogeological step does heavily involve, you know, groundwater mounding, flow direction, sensitive receptor impacts, that type of stuff, all of which has to be analyzed by a licensed hydrogeologist, professional geologist and submitted to the state's own professional geologist for a review and approval. Specific to this site, we kind of focused, you know, zoomed in a little bit on the Hunting Lane property because this is where the majority of the wastewater components are going to be cited. So there will be sewer lines from every building. For the facility on North Main, there will be a force main that comes sewage, so there'll be a pump station on that site. It will pump the untreated sewage over to the site, the side, the Hunting Lane property where it will undergo treatment. The Hunting Lane Treatment Facility is shown in this area. So this is the, essentially the entrance from Hunting Lane as you come onto the property. So this is the area where the treatment is going to occur. And this is the effluent disposal up in the back here. One thing I'd also point out, you can, you can see that this, this line here, the stash line in the middle represents the IWPA from the wells that are, you know, Susan had talked about previously. So as you can see, the disposal is, is quite a distance away from that, which should help to serve to protect that water supply. In terms of, you know, where we're at and what we kind of foresee happening here, the treatment system selection and level of treatment will be commensurate with the, the quality discharge quality limits. And that's, that's a function of the hydrogeology of the site. It does vary from site to site. It's, it'll be very specific relative to, you know, what groundwater quality is like and, and what any potential sensitive receptors there may or may not be. This leachive field location isn't shown to be mapped on any mass DP sensitive areas per their GIS. Based on that mapping, you know, at this point, a preliminary, we feel that treatment's going to be required for organic material suspended solids and nitrogen. We also anticipate including ultraviolet disinfection for removal of bacteria and viruses as well as active odor control. Some of the different systems that are, you know, going to be put under consideration would be anaphrogram, which is a proprietary mixed type. It's, it's a combination of a different, several different types of technology, membrane bioreactors, rotating biological contactors and sequencing batch reactors. All of these technologies have a very long track record with mass DP of both reliability and consistent effluent quality produced. To get into a little bit more detail relative to the system description, raw sewage is going to be conveyed to this area of the site where it's going to undergo primary settling. So essentially what everyone would know was a septic tank is going to be, you know, several, a couple of large septic tanks that are going to remove heavy material and any floating material, then flow utilization to provide consistent treatment. From there, it will be pumped into a combination of aerobic and anoxic treatment systems to provide organic removal and organic complete removal and nitrogen removal. And then final effluent filtration where any remaining solids are removed and effluent discharge. And again, within this area here, which we anticipate to be the actual treatment facility building will be the electrical components, active odor control system, and then the disinfection for bacteria and virus destruction. Sorry. And then relative to the effluent disposal area, again, this is that existing house. And back in this area, you can see in these locations, we did some preliminary test pits just to get a sense for what the soils were like out here. In this area, there was greater than five feet of sandy loam. We did some park tests and the rates were less than five minutes per inch. Seasonal high groundwater was approximately two to three feet below grade based on observed models. And using this information, you know, the next steps would be witness soil testing with the DEP to confirm this area was suitable. It would be involved in more extensive testing than just these preliminary test pits. You, you kind of do the corners and in the middle. Some borings be completed, soil samples would be taken, sieves would be taken of the soil samples. And then the wells themselves would be tested for hydraulic conductivity to really get a sense for what the quality of the soil is and how much water can or can't move through the soil. Based on that information, a hydrogeological analysis will be completed to look at mounding groundwater flow impacts to adjacent sensitive receptors. And then a system would be sized and, and designed to meet the state standards of, you know, four foot minimum offset between that seasonal high groundwater and the bottom of the field. In terms of post-construction, it's important to note that similar to the water, that these systems are highly regulated. There is another set of regulations, three fourteen CMR twelve, which all it talks about is the operation, maintenance and oversight of wastewater treatment facilities such as this, operators required to be trained and licensed by the state that are required to take contact training hours and constantly be recertified. All treatment facilities such as this by permit are required to have operations staff that is available on a twenty-four hour per day, seven day per week basis. In the event that this alarm condition or something like that, there is someone who will, will be available to respond. Prior to the startup of facility, any permitee is required to put twenty-five percent of the total construction cost into an interest-bearing escrow account of, and that's real dollars. It's, it's not a letter of credit. It's an actual escrow account that is funded fully prior to final sign off by the state. That escrow agreement, the state is party to. And this is, this is a backstop that serves as a, as a financial means in the event that there are permit issues or compliance issues. There is, you know, financial means available to correct a, any issues that may occur so that, you know, the residents and, and ultimate, you know, owners of this site and, you know, the people that live there, you know, have some confidence that, you know, there is funds of it. Excuse me, funds available, you know, in the event that, you know, something needs to be addressed. In terms of, you know, testing and reporting, there's going to be effluent testing on a monthly basis of the actual discharge, quarterly groundwater sampling as part of this permit and every permit. The data is reviewed on a regular basis by the DEP and they do have the authority via three fourteen CMR five to address compliance issues, whether it's issuing non-compliance consent orders, that type of stuff. The state also does annually inspect every facility and, you know, talk to the operator, review the past year's performance and, and actually see with their own eyes how things are going, ensuring that maintenance is being done, stuff like that. And I, you know, I know I went through that somewhat quickly, but I didn't want to obviously probably get to the question and answer period. So, you know, happy to open up at that point, Mr. Chairman, to, you know, any questions on, on what we covered.
Daryl Beardsley, I think you're first up. Daryl?
Had to unmute. For active odor control, what specific types of systems are you considering for that?
So generally we find that what works best is a combination of activated carbon and it's a permanginate based media. So essentially, you know, tanks and processes that generate odors have dedicated odor control ducting or piping that's, that's brought into the tank. And then that's connected to a blower system that actually puts the, the tanks under negative pressure. So any odor that's generated is actually pulled through the, that ductwork into, you know, an activated carbon media bed where the, the carbon captures those compounds before it gets discharged. So the media is expendable. So over time it's going to need to be replaced and there, there typically are sampling ports that actually measure how much of the media is, is bound up with those compounds. And then, you know, the operator will at that point, you know, have, make that change.
Okay. And the reason I'm asking is that some such systems will use a masking agent. In addition, if they can't completely knock it out, but that does cause some respiratory or sensitivity reactions from people nearby. So as on behalf of the Board of Health, I would say that that would not be something that we would be eager to have and then have to address.
Yeah, agreed. The masking agent stuff is, is, you know, we don't feel that's a, that's a good long-term solution. So.
You don't feel it's a good long-term solution?
Exactly right. So that's why, you know, the system would be like an activated, inactivated carbon where this stuff is actually removed from the air and the airflow as it goes through as opposed to trying to cover it up. So.
Okay. And it sounds like that means it could be a short-term solution. But again, I guess I'd want to know if there was some sort of upset or other other situation that caused the GAC not to operate as you would expect, then what? You know, what could be implemented versus masking? You don't have to answer that now, but I would be interested to see that.
Well, just, just generally, I think that the way that the, the, these systems are configured, it's, it's a slow, the media gets used up over time. So it's a creeping failure, I guess is the best way to put it. So the operator will have plenty of advance notice with their own noses that, you know, that they're starting to, to get odors. And at that, then at that point, you know, all the media is replaced and then you start over from scratch. So there really isn't a instantaneous type failure where all of a sudden everything's working great. And then you have these odors that are just uncontrollable. So.
Okay. I guess I'm familiar with some that are more instantaneous actual failures. So you may not have seen them, but I have smelled them. So.
John Garrison, I think you are next, sir.
Yeah, thank you. Again, John Garrison, thirty-three Hunting Lane. I am the abutter here who's houses closest to this system. So David, can you give me a sense of the size of the actual building, both height and?
Yeah, so this is, yeah, this is certainly preliminary, but you know, in our experience for a development of this size, you know, you, you can expect to see, you know, something that's akin to, you know, you know, a nine-foot sidewall and then a, you know, fairly You know, a nine foot sidewall and then, you know, fairly decent sized pitch roof. Typically something that's on the range of, you know, thirty by forty in terms of footprint. I, just one thing I wanted to point out, Mr. Chairman, that I, if I wasn't clear, all these structures out here. Are below ground tanks, so this is nothing that's seen, these are all manhole covers and hatches that are to grade. But ever, all this infrastructure is below grade, the only thing that would be seen would be this building. And with, you know, adequate screening and fencing and that type of stuff. You know, they have a very low profile, it's much smaller than a typical house.
Is there any, is there any noise associated with operating a system like this?
Yeah, it's a great question. Typically, we specify and any equipment that is not in a tank, any pump that that would be below grade. Is going to be specified with sound enclosures, so. You know, they're, they're essentially, the noise is mitigated so that you're in the room with it and you can carry on a normal conversation like we're having now. So by the time it gets outside, you know, they're not really, you're not really hearing.
And I don't have a good sense of scale here on this, on the, you know, sort of larger drawing, but. This appears to be within ten or fifteen feet of my property. Are there no setback requirements that would require a commercial? Septic system like this to not be installed next to somebody else's residence?
No, this, the state does have setback requirements to tanks and buildings. And I believe it is fifty feet for the building itself, so.
So this would have to be fifty feet from my boundary?
From the property line, correct, yep, twenty-five feet, I'm sorry.
Twenty-five?
It's twenty-five feet, my bad, I'm thinking of something.
All right, well, as you can sense, I am extremely concerned. When I think, read things like af- active odor control systems and hear the phrase creeping failure, so. For now, I'll just leave it at that.
Fair enough, thank, thank, thank you very much. We have someone identified as iPad viewer. You're gonna have to identify yourself better than that.
Oh, it may be me, Susan Tyler?
Yes, that's you.
I'm not sure what I am. Anyways, that's a discussion for another day. I have a question, I understand from the earlier discussion. Power outages, there would be generators running for pumping the water. And I've been in town for a long time and Hunting Lane loses power for more than two days. At a time, but generators for pumping water, or is there also going to be generators running to pump the water from not only. The houses on thirty-one Hunting, but also over at forty-one South Main, I mean North Main. So I mean. I'm just worried about the noise level for all these separate generators. Running to run all the pumping stations, I didn't hear anybody mention it. Regarding the pumping of the.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, we would, any, any generators would also be specified with sound, sound enclosures.
Does, does the generator go inside the building, which sounds to be kind of like similar to a large garage, very large garage, thirty by forty nine foot walls and a roof?
Typically, it would be outside in a sound weather, a weatherproof sample enclosure. But it can, it can go inside if it's, you know, you have to obviously design for that.
Alright, thank you.
Okay. Next, Marion Neutra, and can you specify whether you're wearing your. Planning board hat or your individual citizen hat, please ma'am?
Ah, yes, this is Marion Neutra, twenty-five Prospect, citizen of Sherburne. I wonder, I'd like to ask if. This type and size and scale of sewage treatment plant has been built by. The company that you're going to use in any of the nearby towns or anywhere within driving distance. So we could go take a look?
Yeah, it's, it's preliminary in that process, there really hasn't been any final determinations. This term made on system size configuration and then contractor, so. It's really, it's impossible to say at this point.
Well, I'm, I'm asking if a similar sort of. Sewer treatment system is in the area that we could check out, certainly they've been built in this area before.
Yeah, no, what I'm saying is the final, so, you know, we could get to a list of groundwater discharge permits that are the same approximate size, but. The determination on the actual file configuration. And also who's building it hasn't been. It's not known yet, so it may, it may end up being apples to oranges comparison.
Alright, I'm interested in this line, and I thought we could see a sample, an example and get some on the ground experience from. Others that have lived with such a system, but thank you.
Okay, M. Callahan, I think wishes to speak.
Yeah, Mark Callahan from thirty-one Hunting Lane. And I'm in the, I guess it would be the. Southeast corner of that lot. And with a proposed leaching field is. I'm very familiar with and it's very wet back there. And I'm wondering. You know, how you could put a leaching field in there as well as the line coming up from. The water treatment plant is along the wall. Which most of the people on Hunting Lane. That's their property line and my well is like. Five feet from the lot line, so how does that impact me?
Dave, as you're answering that, can you, can you put up the, the right screen so we can sort of see it? Thank you.
Yeah, sure, so, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is mostly schematic in nature, obviously, the, the, the line can be. It's adjustable, so certainly can factor that location into the final design as needed to, to, you know.
Leaching field there. I mean, it's wet. I don't know, I mean, it dries out in the summer, no question. But the rest of the year, it's pretty wet back there, and you got Paul Hill that drains down into there. And I mean, it's very wet, I don't know how you put a leaching field in there on top of what, of a wet.
Yeah, so the, the. The process of identifying where the seasonal high groundwater is, is, is critical. And it's the first steps in the process for obvious reasons, to your point, it's really important to. To identify what that water table is and to make sure that you're not impacting it. But that being said, you know, everybody who has a septic system. You know, you, you're, your septic field is draining into seasonal high groundwater. The key is to make sure that there is a minimum separation between. The bottom of the field and seasonal high groundwater, wherever that may be. And if that's artificially constructed by, you know, raising the system up. That, that's perfectly fine, and you know, like, as I mentioned earlier, you know, the, the models and the soil out there indicated that it was roughly two feet below grade, so. You know, there will be an offset above that seasonal high groundwater commensurate with. Regulation to make sure that that offset is maintained and that the water will actually move through. You know, the, the place title five material and into, into what is ultimately groundwater.
So, I mean, that's lowland and you have to raise that, you know, yeah, and I think you mentioned earlier that that was only. Two or three feet to groundwater. I mean, that's lowland, I mean, that's wet, it's like swamp. And. So you'd have to raise that up quite a bit and. You know, and then I'm also concerned about my well. That is right along that lot line. We are bringing all this wastewater up. So.
And it is part of the process of, you know, citing the leaching and the hydrogeology, all the adjacent wells. Are gonna have to be located and identified and factored into this, you know, the assessment of the site. And certainly, that's, that's a valid concern and, you know, it's shared by us as well as the D E P. You know, impacts to potable water supplies are very important part of the process.
So, so isn't it, you know, I don't understand all the processes that every, all you have to go through, but. It seems. Crazy that, you know, you got all this development and you don't even know whether it really works. For the wastewater and the, the water supply, you know, it's. But, you know, that's beyond me, but I live here, I know that that's wet.
Alright, thank you. Paul Batisho, I think you're next.
Thanks, Rick. I think, you know, in a lot of these conversations. I think it would be very helpful if Lynn or someone else. Leads the Z B A to actually walk this property. And to, so they can understand our comments about, well, it's right on top of the butters. Where that sewage treatment plant is going to be, where the wheat fields are. And if that can be done, I think the Z B A will have a better idea of how to sort of handle a lot of these questions and comments. And if the butter is going to be part of that, to sort of, to understand. Sort of the totality of the property. And where the development is proposed to see whether you think it's reasonable. I know I've mentioned this before, that at one proposal by the developer. Couple of proposals ago, all the residences are on the other side of the driveway. And now that all the residents are pretty much on the butter side of the driveway. That's just an example of, you know, it, it'll give the Z B A more perspective of what. The issues are about where, how, how big things are, where they are. So it's not just hearing, you know, people complaining without having your own view of it.
Okay, the answer to that lies with Ms. Sweet and Mr. Haverdy. They are under no legal obligation to invite the Z B A or anybody else onto the property. Some developers choose to do so because they think it's, it's helpful for just the reason you articulate. Some developers choose not to because they think it's just inviting in trouble. And those are my words, not Paul's. Paul, Lynn, what's your reaction?
Mr. Chairman, the board is certainly within its rights to hold a site visit and take a view of the site, and we would welcome that. I am a little hesitant in doing it with a wide open invitation to neighbors, particularly during a COVID crisis.
Well, why don't, why don't you and Lynn take that one back? And think about what you want to do on other site visits, we have done COVID compliant site visits, lots of twenty-five people, everybody masked, staying apart, things like that. We've got a set of ground rules from our Board of Health. So think about what, what might work, certainly I'd be interested in seeing the site, the other board members might as well, and. Just, just think about that one, if you would.
Well, could the board members at least, maybe through Gino, express? You know, what days of the week and times work for them so that we can. You know, want to make sure that the snow is off the site, want to make sure it's walkable, want to make sure that if there are. Flags that need to be put here and there, we can get those out there, so, but it would be helpful to know. You know, have a consensus at least from the board members of what works for them. We did conduct a pretty extensive site walk when, when we had mass housing, you know, out, out, out here. As, as I recall, but I, I feel like that was before COVID.
I think it might have been, I, I, I missed that one myself, so.
Yeah, yeah, so. We'll figure it out, we'll work with you, but we need probably a little bit more information on your end, and I need to connect with Michael about. You know, we don't want you walking out there unless we can actually show you where things are.
Understood, Michael Lesser quickly and then Mark Callahan.
I guess I have a question about the process of. The analysis of the septic stuff, what will happen? I'm trying to remember what will happen within the comprehensive permit process in terms of. Any sort of hydrogeologic studies like. Like when I remember the field to Sherburne, there was an air, area of impact analysis, we'd see where the effluent is going from the septic field, where the surrounding sensitive. Receptors were such as neighbors wells and whether we had to worry about that. And there's two months left, is that something that was somehow going to all happen in the next few months for your?
Well, remember, the fields of Sherburne didn't have a wastewater treatment plant.
Right.
So, so what, what, what comes out of their septic system is a very materially, materially different substance than what comes out of a. Properly functioning wastewater treatment plant. Okay, so, so the issue is, the, the question's still a fair one, but the answer is very different. Because what comes out of the wastewater treatment plant while not drinking water is awfully darn close.
Okay, so basically, that kind of area of impact analysis of what's going to, for the neighboring wells, right, I understand that there's no, there's a public treatment. Public water supply here, which is different, but, but just for the neighboring wells, neighbors to feel about what's down, what do they? Who's down gradient to what?
It also seems to me that, that the neighbors have hired a gentleman who has some experience in this area, and I bet they will ask him.
Just worried about the timing of getting things done and resolved.
Right. Well, again, well, we, we, we want to work with this developer on timing, we just got this stuff. We do not have to close our, we do not have to close our hearing until May thirty-one.
That's two months from now, which is both a lot and a little. For the fact that it's in a six month process and two months from the end of it, you're getting this kind of work. That might take a little bit more to review, I have a little trouble with how the six month window works. When they can submit significant information late in the process.
Well, as, as I said before, that, that is a risk reward for them. They put in no information or late information, they risk getting conditions they may not like.
As long as we're prepared to put them on the table, okay.
Alright, Daryl Beardsley, you're next.
I just, forgive me, but I do need to comment on the near drinking water quality. Comment about wastewater treating plants.
Not everybody else's.
Yeah, having managed them for ten years. There are things that they do very well and will achieve drinking water quality status, and there are things that they do not address. But may not always be tested for or designed for, so. That's, that's all I can say right now.
Fair comment, I, I accept the correction. Paul.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Wrong Paul again, sorry. I'm sorry, I meant Paul the neighbor, not Paul, Paul the lawyer.
Okay. Sorry, you had alluded to this a couple hearings ago. That the six month period is the general period, but it is subject to extension by mutual consent. The real big issues here are the issues that are being put on the table this week, stormwater, water and septic. And. You know, I recognize that those take time for the developer to put together. You know, the hearing started in October and we're getting them now and it's almost April. And it's going to take time for a peer reviewer, undetermined, our sort of reviewer to look at these things. And to be, so I, I think, you know, consideration. Has to be given by the Z B A and the developer that, you know, these are the real critical things. That are the issues here for the butters and for, and for the town. And so, you know, the May thirty date, if it's not an appropriate date, it's not an appropriate date.
Well. Yes, yes and no, yes, in the sense that we might feel it's not appropriate. No, we don't get to tell Mr. Haverdy that he has to say yes.
Right, I didn't say that, yeah, I know, it's mutual agreement.
Right, and, 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 and what commonly happens is. The, the development team, Paul Haverdy, I'm not speaking for you, but the development team often just want to hand out extensions. Hand over fist because then maybe the town drags its feet and isn't responsive. On the other hand, when the town is responsive and trying to. On the other hand, when the town is responsive and trying to work things through as constructively and as quickly as they can, many developer lawyers will turn to their clients and say, look, it's in our interest to give these people more time because we want to get the best set of conditions we can. So my experience and intent with Paul Haverdy would be, let's move the process as as fairly and quickly as we reasonably can and then hope he feels that it's in his interest to extend if we need one.
Fair enough.
And and Mr. Chairman, with regards to the stormwater, that information has been in front of you for several months now. It has already gone through a round of review by your peer review consultant. We will be responding to that review, but it's already, you know, well underway.
Right, but but the water and sewer is new.
The the water and sewer is new, but it also wasn't something that we were required to submit really any information regarding. Because again, it's it's exclusively within state approval jurisdiction. However, we did submit it. I certainly agree you have the right to conduct any peer review of what was submitted. But ultimately, the the more detailed information is going to come post approval.
We 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 appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay. Don't see any other hands up. Okay. Lynn, it's nine thirty. I might suggest that we talk about next steps a next time.
Absolutely. Couldn't couldn't agree with you more. We appreciate everyone's time. This is it's this is complicated information. I would like to suggest that we meet more than once a month in order to meet the the May thirty first deadline. You may recall that the first few months of this process were spent not on reviewing the evidence on the Z B A application, but on the sixty one B matters. And as Paul pointed out, the stormwater information was submitted as part of our initial filing. In fact, we had expected North Main Street site to be peer reviewed at at the last hearing. And we're surprised that wasn't available. There was a little bit of confusion with Gino and I. So my suggestion is that we moved meetings every two or three months that we what I see is left for the next meeting is that we will get as soon as we can our response to the stormwater peer review. We will work to try and set up a walk for the board members. But other than that, we've presented a lot of evidence to the board. And other than the stormwater peer review and response, I think we owe you some truck data in the site walk, then we would want to move to going through the waivers and going through a decision. So that's at least three meetings in the next two months that I see. Plus the site walk through it now.
Okay, plus, we probably will hear from the butters who's on the water and and quite possibly wastewater treatment. Hunting Lane to butters, you you, it sounds like you've just gotten started with Dr. Wang. Is there any sort of expected timeframe for feedback from him?
As I said, I just got pretty much today to, so the water and the wastewater. And one of the lady raised one thing, actually, I were thinking that to ask. I probably missed what is the specific technology is going to be used for the wastewater treatment? If that technology used for groundwater discharge permit have been used near or in a similar neighborhood setting? And I can understand the neighbors have a great concern about odor control. If there's a similar treatment plan already built nearby, I think if a neighbor probably would be able to take a look of it as a real construction to get a sense and it's for mutual benefit. Because I believe anything that to be approved is through a real life demonstration. So we understand some of the things maybe in the design and the presentation can be perfect. But in the real life, it may have something they can get a better feeling of how that things look like and how that things feel like, and especially for the people living around it. So I think that request is reasonable, so I have been requested by that. I try to give them examples of that kind of treatment and groundwater discharge permit projects they can go and visit, so.
Okay, that is that is a little off topic of our next meeting. But Dave, I'm going to put you on the spot and say, if you can't come up with some nearby examples of where these plants are, you better say, I can't possibly come up with any nearby examples of what these plants are like. You're allowed to qualify it out the wazoo that, you know, it might be different. But I I think you need to give people something they can drive by and say, oh, it looks like that, and it smells like that. Doesn't have to be your final design, but I I can't believe there's not within thirty miles of here another plant like this.
Why don't we make that a follow up to?
Yeah, right.
We'll we'll work on that offline if you don't mind.
So so let's go back to the question of timing.
I have a timing question.
Yes, Michael.
Did I? I wasn't sure what your process is for getting a peer consultant for the water and the septic and whether whether you have, whether you're getting new bids and then have to go back to the developer and whether you have to approve it as a board before you go to contract, and then they can then start the work and what the timeframe is for just getting this stuff reviewed. And without it bumping up against the only two months left.
Okay, Michael, we we did discuss that some, where Gino and Lynn are going to speak offline between the meetings and come will come up with proposals. So we're hoping not to have to have a series of meetings on the peer reviewer. What I'm hoping is that at our next meeting, we hear from Gino and Lynn. Yes, we've we've selected X, we think the price is Y, they're ready to go. I I might even be inclined to have them be ready to go and authorized to go before the next meeting, if if they can come to closure on 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 what should be done.
That's the kind of points that I'm worried about is because if you wait two or three weeks for the next meeting, and then you vote, and then and they have to be waiting for you, that then it's, then they can't start, and then you're not going to get any within a month.
But Michael, please, please let us try to set the schedule.
Okay, I'm just saying that whether you even want to ask for a little extension now because of.
Mike, Michael, please, please. Okay. Board members. Two weeks from tonight is April first. I think that's in short. Is it the thirteenth that Paul Haverdy, that you said you and Michael Terry were going to have had worked through your next round of differences?
That is correct.
Okay. So what if we tried for the fourteenth or fifteenth of April, which is and and not four weeks out, probably more like three and a half? Because then we'll be able to get a report on whether you guys are are have continued to have a love it or if or having a more contentious relationship. And that'll be useful.
Hearings on the fourteenth.
Fourteenth and fifteenth.
No, fifteenth.
Fifteenth works, fourteenth, we already have two hearings.
Yeah.
More important than ours? You don't have to answer that. Board members, could April fifteenth, which is a Thursday, work?
Yes, yes.
Let me, let me just check with Michael to make sure there's there's a tiny drop of testing that he has to do. I want to make sure that we can get you our information at least a week prior, so you have time to look at it.
That would be good. Let's check with him now on that.
He's here. He can either text text me or or speak up.
I I think we should be able to get the peer reviewer had asked for some additional test pits. We do have several that were conducted by Dave Formato's group on the North Main Street piece. So we do need to touch base with Gary to see if we could dig some holes on his property to within the the stormwater basin. So I think one, two, three, I mean, we've got, that'd be three weeks prior to the fifteenth, so I think we should be able to schedule to get some holes dug out there before that.
Okay.
Thank you.
And Lynn, if we can get, you know, board members and other whoever else is invited on the site before then, great. If we can't, it's not a showstopper. It's not a critical path item, but I I agree, it would be good.
Do we want to put two more meetings on on the books just so that we've got them, just because everyone's schedules are so crazy?
Well, there's something to be said for that. Of course, we don't know what we're going to find on the fifteenth yet either, so.
Obviously, if if we've got to cancel them, we should then, you know, we will.
Do you think we'd have material progress by the twenty ninth? That's two weeks from the fifteenth.
Yeah, I mean, I I don't know, as I said, it's up, as far as the the water and sewer peer review is, all you're reviewing is what we gave you. And all of it is very conceptual. So I would think that if that that gives a good amount of time for whoever the town hires and and to go over the waitlist. So, you know.
Maybe, maybe not, maybe, maybe Dr. Wang will be done with his work, maybe he won't. And maybe our peer reviewers will be able to simply reach into their pocket and say, we think they ought to do X, Y, and Z for test testing, given these wells and this history here, but it may also not be that easy, so.
Yeah, so I mean, if you want to do something on the sixth and the twenty seventh, that's three meetings. So that gives, you know, three week, every three weeks, maybe, you know, I can.
I see. So you're saying April fifteenth, May sixth.
Yeah, and the and the twenty seventh.
And May twenty seventh. And May twenty seventh would give us a good opportunity to decide whether we're going to extend or not.
Exactly. We'll see. Hopefully, there's a lot of progress, and if not, we'll figure it out.
If not, then we'll have a less pleasant relationship, and we'll all live.
All the meetings has to be on Thursday, sorry, because I have, I used to have lots of meetings on Thursday night. So I I just want to make sure there's any other options can be considered.
Thursdays are not a lock in for me, other board members.
I don't have any restrictions.
Yeah, I have a constru, Wednesdays tend to tend to be the other municipalities that we're working in. I just don't know when they're going to be that far down the road.
Tuesday.
What about, what about Tuesdays?
I, you know, we'll, we'll, I don't know, Paul, what what's your schedule looking like for those those weeks? We were looking at rather than on the on the on the.
Well, the the only thing we need to do now for sure is continue to one more.
Yeah, let's just do that.
And we can sort of consider the others placeholders. You say May sixth.
Yeah.
And May twenty seven.
Yeah, and we'll know, we'll know by the next meeting what our next round with everybody else is.
But if we can try to move some of these to a Tuesday or something to try to accommodate the the butters consultant. You know, if that can reasonably done, I'd like to do it. He's probably going to have some important things to say.
I generally have Tuesdays open. I think I've got a couple that are booked, but not too far.
All right, so I'm going to make a motion to the my fellow board members that we continue this hearing. We close tonight's hearing, and we continue to April fifteenth, twenty twenty one, seven P M by Zoom.
Second.
Lively debate. All in favor? I. Roll call. No, no back votes, I.
Stefan votes yes.
Pitch, yes.
All right, Gino, you have it. Everybody who attended, thank you for hanging in there. It's a long meeting. It's a complicated project. I I know there's certainly some frustration. I appreciate everybody's patience.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good night.
Good night, good night.
Okay.